Are we good? Okay. I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grumbles? Ms. Knapp?
Here.
Mrs. Faust.
Here.
Okay, we'll do Pledge of Believers. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight, we have two zoning applications. First, we're going to hear, see, we'll open the hearing for zoning 2202. Do we usually read the legal notice, or?
You don't have to.
Okay. All right, this is, the applicant is Plan For Land LLC. The owners are he and mail, and the property address is at 7959 South Old State Road, Lewis Center, Ohio, on approximately 1.807 acres, currently zoned farm residential district, and it's a request to rezone from FR1 to S, Single Family Planned Residential District to allow for single-family homes. And I will read the rules for the hearing. When the board is ready for public comment, there will be an opportunity for members of the public to speak during the hearing. Statements made or written in any YouTube chat rooms shall not serve as public comment. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and we prefer that you limit your comments to three minutes. Residents wishing to speak shall keep their comments limited to the merits of the application. Okay, we'll have the staff presentation.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone 1.807 acres from farm residential to split a single lot into three separate lots. Lot one would contain 0.56 acres, lot two would contain 0.63 acres, and lot three would contain 0.62 acres. Lot one currently has an existing house residing on the property. The proposed development will comply with all single-family planned residential standards and will include three tree preservation areas along the northeast and southern parts of the development. A shared access easement also exists along South Old State Road for access into lots one and two. Only one divergence is requested, and that is from Section 10.06, which requires a plat. The property is surrounded on all four sides by single-family planned residential along with the roads of Hay Court and South Old State Road. On the second page of the staff report, you can see the aerial of the property as long as the site plan, which shows the proposed lots being split. In terms of density in unit count, parking, minimum floor area, and all other development standards, they all comply with the single-family planned residential standards. The open space, there is technically no dedicated open space, however, the applicant will record three tree preservation easements and areas around the property in lieu of that dedicated open space, and that is acceptable to the zoning office. There is one divergence requested from 10.06D, which requires a plat. This is also acceptable to our office and also Delaware County Regional Planning. The Orange Township Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval at their meeting held on May 24, 2022, including one modification, that modification being, at the time of development of Lot 3, as indicated on the development plan, the property owner will endeavor to join the Walker Woods Homeowners Association. Delaware County Regional Planning Commission also recommended conditional approval of this rezoning request, subject to concurrence by staff with the divergence request not to plat, and continued detail provided by the sanitary engineers' office regarding whether all three lots can be serviced. That concludes the staff report.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Would they like to come up and give a presentation?
Joe Place with Plan For Land. My clients are here as well, property owners. So we don't have anything necessarily to add. It was very thorough, a meeting with the zoning commission. Appreciate their recommendation to join the HOA. We have reached out through their website. Not sure if somebody's here from the HOA, but we'd love to have a more formal conversation with them. So we're endeavoring to do that. But I did talk to a legal counsel about the process to traditionally join an HOA, and it sounds like it's going to be a long road, but it's something we would do after the parcel's created. So we'll continue, as it says, to endeavor to do that, but want to kind of work with the HOA to understand what that commitment's going to be and how that'll go through, but otherwise, open to that commitment. But don't have anything to add, and we appreciate if you have any questions or if there's comments from the public that we need to address. We're here to do that. Thank you.
My only question was about the HOA, so you answered that there. I just wanted to, I had some concerns from a resident about the type of homes that would be built on the property. So just to read out loud so that people can hear the development standards about the architectural design criteria for the homes that they will be abiding by this. So all dwellings within the single-family land residential district shall be either two-story or ranch-style homes with basement options. All dwellings shall have a minimum two-car attached garage with three-car garages being provided as an option. Each structure shall contain only one dwelling unit. The exterior of all dwelling units shall be clad entirely of natural or man-made finishes, including engineered wood siding and trim, hardy plank, or similar. Natural wood siding, cultured stone, stone and brick. A minimum of 50% of the front face of the structure will be natural materials. Wood or engineered wood as the main siding element on the front face is permitted only if the wood is used on the remaining three sides as the main siding element. Vinyl siding shall not be permitted. So just to reassure our residents that the homes that will be built there will fit in with the rest of the homes in the area.
Yeah, the goal is to mimic the neighborhood behind the character and quality.
And I did have a question. On page 22, it talked about the design concept and location. And its proposed development is not determined at this time. The vacant lots may be built by the current owner or will be marketed for sale, and any future owners are bound to the terms of this agreement. So I just wanted clarification if you guys knew what the plan was.
I think their goal is to build, to rebuild, remodel the home, and obviously to build two new structures, but we wanted to leave it open, just because I wanted to leave it open. I know lumber prices were fluctuating, and to make a commitment like that, they're not traditional developers. As you can see, we're building like three lots. So the thought was to leave that as an open-ended commitment, but the goal is to build all three.
And then to, I'm assuming, then to sell the homes? Okay.
So you might demolish one of the homes that you were saying?
It would likely be remodeled.
Just remodel.
Yeah, that existing house on Lot 1 would be remodeled, and then there's an existing garage we were just talking about, maybe relocated. It obviously can't remain where it is, so we put it to be removed, but we worked with the zoning office to make sure it fits within that footprint and obviously fits the characteristics of the design standards that you have.
And are the architectural standards, they are in keeping exactly with the existing homes in the area?
Yes, yeah.
There's no differences?
I didn't see anything from what was there. We actually used standards for another lot split we had done down the road. It was my understanding that the standards there might have been a little bit stricter, so I think what we have there is more, maybe a little bit more strict than what's in the neighboring neighborhood, but it'd be in keeping with what ended up getting built there.
Even, will the homes be the same size as the existing homes?
Yes. It's my understanding, square footage, we didn't add an additional restriction on square footage from what the zoning requires, but based on the floor plans of what's next door, they're in keeping, and they're above those minimum square footage, but I think we'll be in keeping with that neighborhood.
Did you just include the minimums required from this zoning?
I don't believe we added additional from what the PRD standards were, so.
Because those are pretty low, I think.
They are, yeah. It's not the intent to hit the minimums, but I think the goal was to come up with a design that's going to be fitting. All three of them have ample area for building sites, so they're not looking to be small homes here. Obviously, the land value, the market value's going to be pretty substantial, so I'd like to build something comparable.
Do you know what the average square footage of the homes in the surrounding community is?
I do not. It's not something we delved into too much, other than the floor plan, or the footprint, I'm sorry. The footprint was compatible with the existing house, and obviously, the characteristics of what we looked at there. So those homes that are shown on there are representative of the neighboring houses. We don't have floor plans picked out for the individual homes that I know of, but I know the remodel would be.
So you're looking at that same 2,800 or 3,000?
Would you be willing to commit to a minimum of like 2,500 square feet, or?
I'm glad they're here. I'm not sure.
2,500 minimum, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Gives you a little bit of leeway, but you know, just in case something comes down the road, and I would hate to hurt the property values of the surrounding, the homes, just in case.
Sure.
And, let's see here, is it a difficult process to join the homeowners association?
What I understand, it's difficult, but with their consent, it's definitely an option. There's just a lot of votes that'll have to happen, and then it has to be after the parcel's created, from what I understood from council, so parcel number can be applied, and then ultimately, they'll be subject to design review of the neighborhood as part of that.
You said that they are in agreement with that?
I have not had a chance, I've reached out to them through their website, but there's no direct name of who's responsible for the HOA, so I'm hoping to make that contact. But we went ahead and hit our, my counsel, just in the interest of trying to find out what that process would look like, and they did say we would need their consent, obviously, to become a part, but if they'll have passed those resolutions, which we can approach them about, we'll just go through that and make sure that they're aware of what we're trying to do here.
And which is the subdivision that it would be, if you were to join?
It's.
Sure has Walker Wood in the name, but there's.
Yeah, it's Walker Wood.
It's just Walker Wood.
Yeah, so it's Walker Wood. Yeah, I looked up their website, it's like an umbrella organization that looks like it governs the entire subdivision there.
Okay. I can, I live in that area, that's not my subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, if you can, even a board member or a maintenance association or something would be helpful. If I had a little bit more time between meetings here, I would have delved into it a little bit more, but I think that's our interest, is to get this in front of them and figure out what we can do to get their approvals.
Does the approval to join involve like 75% of the property owners agreeing to allow?
It's, my understanding, it was just board, but.
It was just board?
Yeah, but if it's unanimous consent of the board, they don't have to go to their members, that's what I understood.
Okay.
Again, subject to, obviously, reading their documents and making sure that it's not different from the traditional.
That way, it would comply with the deed restrictions and everything that.
Right.
Are there any deed restrictions on it at this point? Are you planning your own deed restrictions, or just go with?
Consistent with the development plan, so all those restrictions that are in the development plan would be carried forward, but as far as deed restrictions for the split, they probably won't be recorded with the split, they'll be governed as part of the development plan, because it's got more teeth than deed restrictions that would be based on one of those owners filing a claim between them.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's different deed restrictions, maybe in the surrounding neighborhood, like sometimes they don't allow sheds or playhouses or stockade fences. A lot of times, neighboring, you know, when you're in a subdivision, you're not allowed to have, there's a lot of really picky subdivisions.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any of those with Walker Woods, but obviously, coming in, Lot 3 would be subject to whatever their standards are, because it would be bound to those covenants with joining the HOA. The other two lots, I'm not sure that we'd want to put similar standards on, just because they're look and feel off the roadway, it's going to be a little bit different, but that'll come with.
Definitely on 3, okay.
Yeah, that'll come with the territory of joining in.
Because it helps to preserve the property values as well as the neighboring properties.
I do not.
Okay, is there any comments for the public or questions? You can come up to the podium if there are. Oh, come on up.
First of all.
Would you like to come to the.
Can you say your name, please?
Now, does it mean people out here can't listen to your conversations?
Yes, it's being streamed.
I have two speakers behind me, but I don't think they're all.
It's being broadcast on YouTube.
I can't, I can't hear.
You can't hear on YouTube?
No, I can't hear.
You can't hear us?
I can't hear you. These speakers are not.
These, the microphones go directly through the computer to YouTube, so that people in that community can be listening.
We can move the microphone closer. Are there any other comments from the public? Let's see here, okay. Four comments. Okay, I'll close the public comment. Is there anything else the applicant would like to say?
No comment.
Okay, so you are committing to the 2,500 minimum square feet. And Mr. Beard, were there any, so were there any stipulations about them joining the homeowners association for the one lot?
It was the zoning commission's recommendation. It was one of their modifications that, yes, the applicant endeavored to join the HOA.
Endeavor?
Yes.
Okay, so, but endeavor doesn't mean that they have to, correct?
I think that language was chosen to give them some wiggle room, because there was some question about just their ability to join the HOA.
So it's not for the applicant to say no, it's for the homeowners association to say no, thank you?
Correct.
They're going to try?
Yes.
So they'll make an effort and?
As long as the HOA accepts them and all the legal processes are followed, then yes, they should.
So to the applicant, so is it correct that if you will approach the homeowners association, and if they say yes, you will definitely join, right? Okay. Okay, and you committed, let's see, the 2,500 square foot minimum?
Or all the homes, is that correct?
Just the ones in the basement.
Just on Lot 3?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other two basements, that whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, and did they comply with the one stipulation from the zoning commission, or was that these?
The zoning commission's only stipulation was that they endeavor to join the HOA.
That's the only, okay, I saw one on there, can't remember. Okay, so, do I have to read? I haven't done one of these hearings for a few years. Do I have to read this whole thing, or just?
So you.
The first part.
So you don't have to read the entire resolution. You will have to read the modification, and if you give me 30 seconds, then I can provide you with that language.
Did everybody sign in? If you can please sign in on your way out. If you didn't, that would be helpful.
So that's for, that would be for all, it's the homeowners association.
Just for the one? Okay, that's right, all right. All right. With.
I think the 2,500 square feet is only for Lot 3.
If.
Is it for all the lots, 2,500?
That is up to you.
Is it the intent of the applicant for 2,500 for all three?
Just.
Yes, right.
So they're existing homes in that?
Right. It would be.
They'll both be in that.
Yeah, what is it, what is the existing home square footage? Okay. So is it okay if we go ahead and set a minimum of 2,500 for all three lots, in case, you know, you were to tear it down or something?
And so the language I just drafted was for all new construction.
Oh, okay. Oh, yep, okay, great. Okay, so, let's see here. Okay, make a motion to approve Resolution 22-233 to adopt the recommendation of approval with modifications of the zoning commission as to zoning application number ZON 22-02 of Plan For Land LLC for he male planned, single-family planned residential district with the following modification, that all new dwellings constructed on any of the lots contained within the single-family planned residential district shall be no less than 2,500 square feet.
Mr. Grumbles? Ms. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Faust?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we'll close that hearing. Okay, the next hearing that we have is rezoning application ZON-22-03. The applicant is Joe Claus, and the owners are Clifford and Elizabeth Curtis at 5495 South Old State Road, Lewis Center, Ohio, on approximately 4.465 acres. Their request to rezone approximately 4.465 acres from FR1 to SFPRD district to allow for single-family homes. So, let's see here. Okay, we'll go ahead and have the staff present.
So the applicant is requesting to rezone 1.807 acres from farm residential, sorry, 4.465 acres from farm residential to split a single lot into two separate lots. Track one would cover 3.62 acres, and track two would be 0.89 acres. Track one currently has an existing house residing on the property. The applicant is specifically requesting that they will comply with all single-family planned residential standards, and this will include a 50-foot highway easement, 12-foot Delco water easement, 20-foot sanitary easement, a drainage easement, and a 75-foot tree preservation area located alongside the northern side of the property. Only one divergence is requested, and that is from Section 10.06, which requires a plat. The property is surrounded to the north by farm residential and single-family homes to the south, east, and west. On page two, you can see the aerial photograph, as well as the site plan proposed by the applicant. And similar to the last application, density in unit count, parking, minimum floor area, and development standards would all comply with the single-family planned residential districts, as well as the open space with the tree preservation easement. The applicant is requesting one divergence, again, which is from Section 10.06, to require a plat. It is acceptable to our zoning office and to Delaware County Regional Planning that this divergence is granted. The Delaware County Regional Planning Commission did recommend conditional approval of this rezoning request, subject to concurrence by RPC staff with the divergence request not to plat, and if individual driveways are not feasible and an access easement must be created within the site, it would trigger a common access driveway subdivision plat. The Orange Township Zoning Commission did recommend unanimous approval at their meeting held on May 24, 2022. I have nothing further.
And how many homes are to be built?
So there is one home currently on the property, and they're proposing one additional lot with one additional home.
Is this, it's not going to attach to the subdivision?
No.
No, it's just by itself? Okay, would the applicant like to come up and give a presentation?
Joe Place with Plan For Land, Mr. Curtis here as well, so they're here to answer any questions you might have. This is an interest to give to one of their kids, a lot to build on. It's a residual lot from the subdivision, so this used to be a part of a larger tract that obviously included those neighboring lots as well. It was built on and split off, but the creek that's there kind of defines the lot. The access that's there today crosses the creek, but it's not practical to likely use that, so we're going to approach the county engineer. We provided a little bit of flexibility about access, posing the potential for a second driveway, which would be ideal, because there's a culvert that separates the two properties at the roadside. So what's being proposed there was a consultation with county on maybe the best scenario to present to them, but we'll have to go through a full lot split process. Other than that, the lots being proposed for access directly off of Old State, similarly, we're laying out comparable design standards to what was prescribed in the last project, with the exception of some outbuildings. I think the interest here was not to limit the ability for outbuildings, because there's a larger tract to the north, and the ability to keep those. Otherwise, the no plat process would commence after this takes effect, and we would work with the township to get those tree preservation easements recorded. I don't have anything to add, unless you have any questions for me. We're fine.
Just one house would be built on that lot, correct?
Correct, yeah. They're retaining the acreage and the lot that they have the house on to the north, it's just splitting this parcel out. This wins the award for the smallest PRD that I've ever done. It might be the smallest one in the county.
I think it's the smallest I've ever seen.
I don't think I've ever seen a two-lot PRD.
It's a mini subdivision.
But I understand you guys don't want the street zoning districts this provides and locks them in on the development density, so I understand why we're here, but happy to be seeking approval for a two-lot PRD.
Do you think you will get approval to connect directly off of South Old State?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah, based on preliminary conversations with the engineers' office, look very favorable.
Because I know it can be difficult, they don't want very many accesses off of South Old State, because it's a very, very busy road.
They might require a cross-access, that if something ever happened to the driveway to the north, that it would be required to connect, but that's just based on my experience with them. They've not indicated that as a part of our discussions with them. We are aware that there might be some sanitary improvements across the site, and want to work with the county to relocate those if they're in the path of a future house, but otherwise, it's a pretty large site for development, big building envelope, likely be building on the south end of the property with the walkout to the north, just because of the terrain that's there.
What sides of home do you think will be built?
I wasn't prepared to answer that, so I might ask Cliff if he has anything.
Can I get your name and address for the record?
Elizabeth Curtis. And it's 5495 South Old State Road.
Thank you. Okay, and what is the minimum square footage? Is it just the standard minimum in the text?
Yeah, identical to the last application, we just mirrored the zoning code, so we did not prescribe anything in addition to that with the application.
Would they be willing to also put a minimum of like 2,500 square feet on the home?
They were saying 2,000, not counting the basement.
Oh, not counting. Is that going to be, oh, with the walkout basement?
It's considered a.
If it has.
I believe it depends on whether it's finished or not.
Yeah, if it has ingress and egress, I think. Do you plan to have a full access from, do you plan to have a full access from the walkout, the walkout basement?
Like a door.
Okay, so 2,500 with the basement.
Will it be finished?
Maybe not initially, maybe at some point.
Yeah. Five years.
All right.
So it sounds like 2,000 would be an easy commitment.
Yeah, 2,000, yeah.
First and second floor.
2,000 without the basement, okay.
Their interest is not to build a small home, but obviously, they're building something and grow into.
Yeah, do you know how many feet their proposed home would be from the existing homes?
Oh, the closest house is located east, and it's, probably scale it off on my drawing, but.
That looks pretty far compared to the last.
It is.
So there's not one south of it? There's not a home south of that?
No. I believe there's a homeowners association lot to the south, right? There's an open space.
Okay, so that's the corner of South Old State and Lewis Center Road. Okay.
Oh.
Oh, there is one there.
Gotcha.
There's a house at the corner, though.
Yeah.
Okay, I misspoke. Yeah, but the lot to the south is not occupied.
So pretty far away from.
Yeah, that one's got a little closer, but it's more of a triangulated lot, so if you can see it there.
Yeah.
I'm going to say that's probably, I think it's probably 40 feet or so. Looks like their rear yard setback might be up on that corner. So rear yards will be joining, not side to side, but rear yards will be.
Have you spoken with that property owner? Have there been any concerns?
I have not.
They were notified.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they've been present in any hearings. We did have some people in the neighborhood, but unless they're here tonight, I'm not aware of any comments from them.
Okay, that's good.
But they were alerted, they got notifications.
Yeah, they.
Yes, we sent out notifications. We did, I believe some public comment was given at the zoning commission level, we received no written public comment.
I think the only comment at the zoning commission level was that they were, the resident was in favor of it, and spoke highly of your family, and we're excited for this opportunity. opportunity for your family.
That's good. Okay. Let's see, okay, are there any questions or comments from the public? Are you okay? Okay, I'll close public comment. And... When do they plan to start construction? Did you already mention that, when they plan to start?
The lot split process will take a few months. I know the zoning takes effect, and then we have to scout signature, so it might be a four to six-week process after it takes effect before we have a parcel, or a timeframe for construction.
Like this fall, maybe, or could it be that soon?
Do you have to do much, just me being curious, much lot clearing? Like, do you have to cut a bunch of trees down, or is the area...
A tree that's already fallen down?
Oh, so... Okay. That's fun. Oh, fun.
That's a good question.
Right.
Okay, I don't think you have any further questions. Do you have any now? Okay, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-234 to adopt the recommendation of approval of the zoning commission as to zoning application number ZON 22-03 of Plan for Land LLC for Curtis Plan Single Family Planned Residential District, with the modification that all new dwellings constructed on any lot contained within the single-family planned residential district shall be no less than 2,000 square feet.
Second?
Mr. Grumbles? Ms. Knapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Faust?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And, all right, I'll close the hearing. Is there anything further? All right. Congratulations.